Most people don't like to hear from me. Okay, so we're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to move on to our last agenda item. And Paul, you're going to do this presentation on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This is project number 2016561. This is Ray Moore appealing the planning director's denial of medical cannabis cultivation registration. I believe we have a couple of requests for continuance on this. One was from the appellant. And I believe the other was from Mr. Caloris, who I believe will be walking through the door shortly. We probably want to address those first.
My understanding is that the appellant no longer wishes to have it continued and wants it heard.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
My understanding is the appellant no longer wishes to have it continued and wants to hear it today, but let's hear from the appellant.
Patrick Goggan for the appellant. I had understood that the other party did not want a continuance. I had requested a continuance so we could try to continue to work this out and try to get to a resolution. I was told that wasn't acceptable to the other side, so we're prepared to proceed. If they have some new information, they can speak to that.
Excuse me, what is your name?
Patrick Goggan.
Okay.
So maybe a little background. There's a lot of complexity with this. It's maybe confusing the issue more than it needs to be. Ray Moore is the appellant. They had an unofficial working arrangement with some other individuals. They had begun to form a corporation, never did so. Some of the documents are in the name of Ladybug Farms, which doesn't exist. But the applicant here, the appellant, is Ray Moore. The other parties that are involved in this really have no standing other than as citizens at this point because they are not formally a part of the application. They are formally involved in the appeal. So it's really up to Mr. Moore and his representative whether or not they want to continue or they believe that there's some reason to ask for their continuance. They earlier requested a continuance. The other parties involved in the dispute between the individuals here said, "No, no, no. We want it heard." And then last night I received a notice from the other party's attorney requesting continuance. I said, "Well, it would have to come before the commission at this point in time." And then when I spoke with Mr. Goggan this morning, he said, "No, we just want to move forward with it." So I don't know if two of them want to get together for just a moment and see if they can go on the same page. But again...
Might I ask a minute to speak with Mr. Caloris?
That's what I was suggesting. And then again, it's up to the planning commission's determination whether or not you want to continue this or have it heard today.
We're fine. We're going to proceed.
So are we. That's amazing. We all agree. Okay. So Paul, we're going to go to you and let you do your 15-minute presentation, and then we will turn to the appellant.
I'm not even sure it's going to run that long. Mr. Mallor pretty well presented it right there. Again, this is appeal number 2016561. Mr. Ray Moore is appealing the planning director's denial of a medical cannabis cultivation registration application. This project is a 10-acre site. It's located at 6216 Trout Lane. That's in Mountain Ranch. And that is in Section 35, Township 5 North and 13 East of the Mount Diablo Meridian. On June 28, 2016, Ray Moore filed a commercial cannabis cultivation registration for 22,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation area. That was later modified to 17,500. On March 3, 2017, the planning director denied the registration based upon the registrant's failure to provide a notice of applicability or a complete application for a notice of intent with the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. That is the heart of the matter. I'd like to read that section that applies. That's County Code Section 1795-165 N4A and B. And it reads as follows. "The registrant must demonstrate compliance with Central Valley Water Quality Control Board regulations by providing documentary evidence satisfactory to the planning director of either of the following. A. A copy of the notice of applicability enrolling the cultivator for coverage under general order number R5-2015-0113, consistent with the area proposed for cultivation, or B. A copy of the notice of intent to enroll the cultivator for coverage under general order number R5-2015-0113, consistent with the area proposed for cultivation. If the registrant has not filed a notice of intent with the Water Quality Control Board prior to submission of the registration to the county, the registrant shall submit all necessary forms and documents to the Water Quality Control Board to constitute a complete application for that agency's purposes no later than September 7, 2016, and provide a copy of a document indicating receipt by the Water Quality Control Board to the planning department." So we have a registrant being required to demonstrate that they have submitted their NOI by September 7. I think I just gave everybody, I want you to everybody here, a copy of the front page and the fifth page of the registrant's application. And on that, you will see the registrant's legal name is Ray Moore. And under legal business name, there's a blank there. So our registrant, our applicant, is Mr. Ray Moore. With that in mind, on June 28, 2016, Mr. Moore submitted an NOI and fees to the Water Quality Control Board on June 28. On July 27, the Water Quality Control Board returned Moore's NOI with a dishonored check note. His fees did not stand. Moving on to September 7, Ladybug Farms submitted a NOI and fees to the Water Quality Board. The Ladybug Farms NOI and fees were valid. Near the end of February 2017, Ladybug Farms withdrew their NOI and requested a refund of their fees. On March 2, the Water Quality Control Board issued a notice of non-eligibility to Ladybug Farms. At that time, Mr. Moore did not have a valid NOI or fee in place, nor had he resubmitted since his original application was rejected by the Water Quality Control Board on July 7. Because of that, the application was denied. It's that simple. Do you guys have any questions?
The application that you gave us, signed by Ray Moore, is dated, oh, May 18. No year. Okay. Got it. Never mind.
The submittal date was when we received it, which was...
Okay, got it.
Are there any circumstances where the planning department would recognize that Ladybug Farms could have qualified as a successor to Mr. Moore as the applicant?
We never received... I'm going to... I think Ethan may want to speak to this, but I want to say that we never received a request from the applicant, Mr. Moore, that the registration be modified and that Ladybug Farms be added to that.
And that would have been necessary in order to start the process?
My understanding. We would also have...
We would have needed to modify a number of different documents within the applications. We do allow individuals to create corporations. And that was something that we would then need to have various documents, either from the state as well as some of the original application forms. If they were assigned by an individual and now they're registering as a corporation, they would need to re-sign those documents in the name of the corporation so that the corporation is, for example, the indemnity agreement or some of the other documents that we have. Would have to be signed on behalf of the corporation, not just as an individual. And we have done that, but that did not occur in this case.
And was the submission by September 7, 2016, of a site management plan to the Water Quality Control Board necessary to constitute, under the words of the ordinance, a complete application?
I would say not. My understanding is the site management plan was a supplemental requirement from the Water Quality Control Board due to the fact that the site was located within 100 feet of two surface water bodies. And at that point, I think that was... That had to do with the notice of non-eligibility that the Water Quality Control Board sent to Mr. Moore on December 27. So that became a supplemental requirement. It wasn't required at the time of submission, say, September 7. That's the question.
And I assume a valid payment of the water board's fees is necessary to constitute a complete application?
Absolutely. That has been, I think, where the planning department, the planning directors, come from. And it has also been a decision, I believe, with this commission, the fee and the NOI application being in place on September 7. Received at the counter? Even, I think, we've been there.
You have an email. It's in attachment Brian Lewis Grove, 122017.
Yes, sir.
And it says, "As best as I can determine, the requirements of the ordinance for water board documentation have been met."
That was... At that point, I was responding to a request that was, to me, a general request of, "How are we doing?" The file had a big...
Who requested that?
That application... That request actually went from Mrs. Deborah Ryanes to Deborah Lewis in our office. And it was referred to me. When Ms. Lewis sent that over to me, I looked at a database that the Water Quality Control Board has provided us. It's our database list applicants who have made their submittal as of 9/7. I went and looked at the database and I saw that a application had been submitted by Ladybug Farms. And so as far as I was concerned at that point, that's where we were at.
So that was you...
That was prior to any of the non-eligibility or any of the other documentation coming from the water...
But that had to do with the Ladybug Farms?
That was... That had to do... That was for Ladybug Farms' NOI at the Water Quality Control Board. But it had the assessor's parcel number, all of the... You know, all of the underlying documentation was relevant to the site. So I looked at that and said, "That looks fine." Additionally, at that time, Peter... I mean, Paul would not have known that there was no connection between Ladybug Farms and the applicant because there is certain situations in which our applications have what we call internally split personality problems or alter ego issues where an applicant is applied as a natural person, later incorporated. But there has to be a certain set of facts where we allow this to occur. And that usually involves the applicant, the natural person applicant, being the sole director of the corporation and someone who's always a nonprofit cooperative or collective. In this case, Mr. Moore never signed any agreement to be a member of Ladybug Farms, nor was he ever a managing member. And nor were the actual managing members of Ladybug Farms on the application ever at any time.
So the database that you were consulting, the Water Quality Control Board, that was by parcel or how was...
It is listed by assessor's parcel. That is how we search it. Correct. And I'd like to say, in addition to that documentation for the NOI with the Water Quality Control Board, we also had at that point documentation within our files that the seller's permit and the business license application had been submitted to our office under the name of Ladybug Farms.
And finally, page 3 of Mr. Goggan's brief on footnote 6 says, "The planning department staff indicated that if the parties could work out their differences, it would be possible to remedy the water board NOI and fees deficiencies." How would that have... How would working out their differences solve the problem?
So after the continued hearing, two weeks ago or a month ago, whenever it was, I met with the... Didn't meet with the applicant because they weren't here, but I met with Mr. Petkovich and his wife. And just sort of tried to explain the situation. And it appeared to me that there might be a possibility. There was no guarantee that if they could actually form the corporation jointly, where Mr. Moore was the principal of the corporation, and if the water board were to accept the timely filing of Ladybug Farms' application, that it might meet our requirements. That has not happened at this point in time.
Okay, so it was...
So it was sort of, it was a number of ifs involved in that.
If you could work everything out, we'll consider what...
What the water board says, yeah. And again, it was relying on what the water board would say. That we would not accept a late filing of that. But since they had filed it, and there was a... And I had briefly spoken with someone from the water board. And they were a little bit unsure of the whole situation themselves, other than the fact that they had sent out the notice of inapplicability because of the withdrawal of Ladybug Farms. But if there was a way that they could be reinstated with the original filing date, then that might have satisfied. But it was a lot of ifs involved in that discussion.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the water board's January 26, 2017 notice to Ladybug Farm LLC. And the heading says, "INCOMPLETE NOTICE OF INTENT." And then it goes down and says, "Central Valley Water Board Staff has determined that NOI is incomplete for the following reasons." And then check the box, "MISSING SUPPLEMENTAL INFORMATION." Another box, "CHECK SITE MANAGEMENT PLAN." What I'm unclear about is whether this supplemental information, by using that phrase, the board means to convey the thought that the information can come after the notice of intent or whether by supplemental it means it's a separate document but has to be submitted with the original NOI. Do you know the answer to that?
I do not believe it has. That needed to be submitted with the NOI, the site management plan. That... With the NOI, a tier 2 or a tier 3 applicant is required to submit a biological assessment plan. If it's a relatively new... I forget what the date was, but there's a certain date. If they... If it's a new grow, after a certain date, they're also asked to submit a cultural resources plan. So those are two that basically could... We could look at and say, "Those have to be there because it is a requirement under the NOI application." We haven't necessarily treated them as such because this was an overwhelming thing for everybody to catch up on. At some point, you may find the planning director changing his direction on that. But the site management plan in and of itself is not required at September 7 deadline. Again, I believe that was a requirement that they developed after they discovered that the grow site was within 100 feet of those two surface water bodies.
So just to clarify that a little bit, the water board, they were under the same constraints that we were, maybe even more so. They had probably fewer resources and covered an area from Calvares County up to the Oregon border. And with the same sort of deadlines that other counties were, you know, creating, they were overwhelmed with applications. And many of the consultants that would be normally available for someone to do a biological study or a cultural resources study also were so overbooked that they couldn't get to them for many months. So the water board was accepting applications with the understanding that the biological and cultural resources study would follow. And, you know, but if the applicant paid the fee, submitted the paperwork, and declared their intent to complete that information, the water board would continue processing their applications. And that's... And I think similar with when there's special studies, such as the management plan, site management plan, those are also something that sort of came in after the fact, in many cases. Now, if they had had their act together a year ago or, you know, before we adopted our ordinance and we had many people that already had a notice of applicability, they'd already done that. But in this case, with so many new applications, not only from Calvares County but from other counties as well, the water board was accepting as a timely filing the paperwork and the fee with the understanding that some of the other documents that would normally be required would follow.
And it was incomplete until they filed those.
They would not issue the notice of applicability, but for the purposes of meeting our requirement, the statement by the water board being on their list of having filed, we found to be satisfactory.
Okay. So then for our purposes, the biological site assessment, cultural resources inventory, and site management plan would not be necessary to constitute a complete application for the water board agency's purposes under our language of our ordinance. So it would not have to be submitted. None of those three would have to be submitted by September 7. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? If you'd like to come up, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. My name is Patrick Goggan. I represent Mr. Moore, the appellant. And I would like to add Phoenix Gardens Inc. to that. And we'll get to that. First of all, I'd like, again, to reiterate my thanks for the continuance in the past to give us the time to try to work something out. This has been a... It doesn't seem like this is a normal situation and a normal reason for this application, this permit being denied. But, you know, as you listen to the facts of this case and you deliberate on it, what is really, you know, a pretty sad story, I ask you to open your heart as well as your mind because that's really going to be what's required here to look at the facts of this case. Let's be clear. But for the pulling of the NOI and the $10,000 by the other party in this incident, it's my understanding this permit would have been granted. And, you know, what we see this as is an act of sabotage. And the only reason the other party's here is an attempt to kill this permit. Retaliation, punishment, anger, fear, I don't know. But he couldn't get his way. And as soon as he realized that he couldn't get his way and he couldn't control the situation, he reverted to childhood, anger, and retaliation. And he pulled the permit. Pulled what was effectively in place for this permit to be granted. So, again, to be clear, we have a victim and we have someone who is an abuser and has committed sabotage and someone who we thought was a so-called partner. But as we walk through, I'm going to try to keep this simple. It's convoluted, it's messy, and I just want to stick to the important facts. The unfortunate facts. So a little bit of background is helpful because you've heard a lot of dispersed facts. Mr. Moore... Mr. Moore comes from a very difficult and heart-wrenching childhood past that resulted in abuse, resulted in neglect, and at the end of the day resulted in serious learning disabilities and an inability to properly read and write. And for that, I stand here today and I express great sorrow that that's happened and that we see an individual who has really tried to come out of a disturbed past and right his ship and get his life started over. Mr. Moore got out of Cuba at the age of 3, came to Florida. Mother got involved with a pretty sordid character and resulted in neglect and abuse. And Mr. Moore ended up having to protect his mom and fend for himself and make his way at the age of 12. In 2010, he decided to come to California to start over, made his way to Fresno and made a new life. He found his wife. And he hopes one day to have a family beyond just his wife. In 2016, Mr. Moore reconnected with an old acquaintance from Florida, Michael Petkovich, and they decided to team up. Mr. Petkovich would work as to coordinate things, to try to fund this project and worked with Ray to help secure a lease. And Mr. Moore ended up applying for the permit application. And by the way, the check, the $10,000 check that was originally submitted by Mr. Moore was post-dated to September 7. I don't know what happened within that, but they didn't get the memo, the date on the check, and they deposited it and it got returned. But in the meantime, Mr. Moore was working with Mr. Petkovich. Mr. Petkovich was working with Mr. Caloris, his attorney. And they established Ladybug Farms. And they were working together to meet the requisite deadlines. But unfortunately, the agreement that they had, the oral agreement that they had, the understanding of the interests and responsibilities and duties and everything, did not get put in writing. So it was all oral. And soon after Mr. Moore and Mr. Petkovich teamed up, Mr. Moore started noticing this controlling behavior, this domineering behavior. And anytime Mr. Moore would raise a concern or object to something, he was dismissed out of hand. And so Mr. Moore kind of got the feeling that this was... Not the most comfortable thing, but we're moving forward. We're a team. So everything got submitted timely, is my understanding, by September 7. Subsequently, Mr. Petkovich went to Mr. Moore's, to the property, and attempted to force him, compel him, to transfer the lease that was in his name to the property into the corporation's name. And without explaining, without any understanding, without any justification, and Mr. Moore was just like, "No." I mean, this wasn't part of the deal. This wasn't the... This wasn't my understanding of what was going on. He never presented an operating agreement for Mr. Moore to sign. Fast forward to December. Again, Mr. Petkovich came to the property, but this time he came enraged. And he... When Mr. Moore refused to leave the property, to transfer again the lease into the Ladybug Farms' name, he got angry and he... he, he got angry, and he battered him. He punched him three times in the face, which resulted in some migraines, which resulted in a police report, and, and, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Moore's uninsured, and there are some potential lingering issues related to that. But we'll, we'll work to get those addressed with appropriate healthcare professionals. On December 29th, this was a done deal. There was no way, after such abuse, that, that we could think that this could occur. Now, only after I got involved and I spoke to Mr. Moore, did I say, look, I think, based upon the issues with the dates, that we need to try to work it out. Permit application seems to be tied, you know, in spite of these deficiencies that have been presented, which seem to be, be overcomable, because nothing other than the NOI and, and the $10,000 payment have been identified as the reasons for the denial. But that, if they could work it out, the proper paperwork, or, or what the documentation could be, work, you know, flexibility with the documentation to have this appeal ultimately granted and, and the denial reversed. But after making great effort to come to the table, the other side showed their true colors as to wanting to control, dictate, and in fact, even reduce Mr. Moore's percentages and force him off the property, not be involved at all. Which is, is non-negotiable, unacceptable. So...
So I'm gonna interrupt for one second, because you basically are supposed to have 15 minutes for presentation, and we haven't addressed the portions of the Water Quality Board in the receipt for September 7th.
How much time do I have?
I, I'm gonna give you a little bit of time, but we need to address that specific situation, this other stuff.
Well, this, this goes...
I understand you're trying to develop a case for us, but we need to get down to the evidence of the Water Board.
Okay, so, subsequent to being informed of the denial, in fact, there was, there was an issue with Mr. Moore receiving mail. It was going, he, he's got a P.O. box, and it was going to, there, there was an issue with the mail going to his home address, or the property address, and not the P.O. box. And later they got it worked out. But it was only later that Mr., in, in, I think sometime in January, that Mr. Moore understood that there were issues with the Water Board, and he worked to address those issues. He engaged Mr. Strange, they got a site management plan going, but, but Mr. Strange had a pile of work that he needed to do, and he worked on it, and he ultimately got it done. And it ultimately was submitted to the Water Quality Control Board in April. But only after Mr. Moore understood that the NOI and the $10,000 was withdrawn. He didn't, he, he was never informed of that at the time. Additionally, the $10,000 has been paid to the Water Board. So we effectively have compliance, as well as...
Was it Mr. Moore's $10,000 that was at the Water Board? That check bounced, correct?
It was, it, I'm talking about a subsequent payment.
Okay, but the subsequent payment wasn't filed in Mr. Moore's name. It was somebody that was not related to this application, correct?
The 10, there was a $10,000 payment that was made by Ladybug Farms, who, at the time, Ray Moore was working with Ladybug Farms.
Okay, but earlier you said, we're not working with Ladybug Farms, but now Ladybug Farms' money is good? I'm confused.
Well, to, 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 in order to make that deadline, okay? But we've created a new corporation. The money's been subsequently submitted to Mr. Petkovich pulling that $10,000. The repayment has been made, we've got evidence that they've received it. We have created a new corporation, and what we are asking for, what we are asking for in the name of equity, in the name of justice, is for constructive compliance to relate back to those dates being met, because of this abuse and this sabotage and coercion and manipulation.
But we're not supposed to accept the money, but when you look at all this, the, whose, I don't even think it matters, the seller's permit's in the name of Ladybug Farms, correct?
We have a new seller's permit, we created a new corporation, once we, once...
But this was all done after September 7th, correct?
Right, and, and, and what I'm, what I'm requesting for you is to think outside of the box here, and look at the situation and the facts that have occurred here, and to constructively find compliance and relate back to the dates, the dates that this new corporation and seller's permit have what were created, to relate back to those dates because of this abuse, because of what is effectively criminal activity.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm gonna relate back to those dates.
That's what I'm requesting.
And I'm doing it.
Thank you.
Okay. The $10,000 by the applicant was submitted before the September 7th deadline, correct? Mr. Moore submitted his $10,000 and his application before the deadline.
That's correct, a post-dated check that was deposited a month or two early.
Okay, so his, and, and he never resubmitted his $10,000 before September 7th, on or before?
Lady, he, he didn't, in, in the guise of Ladybug Farms.
Okay, Ladybug Farms is not the applicant. Did your client at any point in time submit the $10,000 before September 7th, or on September 7th?
No, he did through relating back and through constructive compliance, because he was working with Ladybug Farms. There's documentation that has been submitted...
Before us is an applicant of Mr. Moore. I don't have, have an application before me for Ladybug Farms. Nowhere do I have an application for Ladybug Farms. I don't have anything to go off of on them. They submitted money using an APN number that had some incorrect errors to it, the Water Board...
No, I believe, actually, I believe it was Mr. Moore's that had a single digit wrong.
Okay, and you're, you know what, I think you're correct, now that I recall the paperwork.
And that the NOI that, that was submitted by Mr. Koloris was actually for the proper APN.
Okay, so the issue for me, I'm, I'm just, and, I mean, we haven't even gotten to public comment yet, but I'm just gonna let you know where my issues lie, so that when we get back to rebuttal, you know where I'm coming from. Mr. Moore's the applicant, Mr. Moore was the responsible party to submit, Mr. Moore was the responsible party for payment, it wasn't done before September 7th. As far as Ladybug Farms goes, and Mr. Moore, that's a civil issue that doesn't have anything to do with me. As a commissioner, I have to look at the application before me, the applicant, the appellant, and that is Mr. Moore. I don't see where Mr. Moore paid and took care of his paperwork before September 7th. So I'm just telling you what, what I'm looking at and the order of...
He, Mr. Moore, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you're okay.
Mr. Moore understood that, and remember, I, go back, let's go back to these, his, his issues. I mean, his understanding was, he didn't, he didn't understand all the, the, um, these technical parameters. And he understood that by partnering with Michael Petkovich, and Michael Petkovich was taking care of these details, that he was an extension, that Michael, the Ladybug Farms, his understanding was that they were an extension of his application.
But they're not.
Well, that was his understanding, and so what, what I'm requesting, again, is some construction, constructive understanding.
So, okay, so when I listened to you talk earlier, Ladybug Farms' money is good when it can benefit you, but then when it's not benefiting you, they're no good.
They're no good after a criminal act of battery.
Okay, but, but you want us to use their money at one point, and in the next point, we're not supposed to.
Because at the, because at the time, they were together and they were compliant. And it was only subsequently, after the fact, after this abuse that occurred, that it could no longer, they could no longer be together.
Okay, but see, that's why I'm saying that becomes a civil issue. That doesn't become an issue for us to rule on, that's not our responsibility. Our responsibility here today is no different than any other applicant that's come before me. And the applicant applies, the applicant submits, and if they didn't make the September 7th date, this commission and previous commissions have consistently ruled, you did not meet the guidelines and the deadlines. And so I can't, based on black and white paperwork, it's very difficult for me to jump ship on sympathy, because, and I understand, I'm sorry for the problems that everybody has, but they're not, they're not the planning commission's place to rule on. And everybody that comes before us that didn't meet the September 7th deadline has a story to tell, and we have felt sorry for many of them. That doesn't change the black and white process that we have to rule on. So I'm just, I'm just letting you know where I'm at, and I'll let you finish, and I'll stop interrupting you.
That's okay. Look, the planning department understood that Ray Moore and Ladybug Farms were proceeding together, that the applications were proceeding together. They, why would they spend all of this time interacting and interfacing with Mr. Petkovich and processing these materials if they didn't see these together? Why are they, why are these proceeding?
Because if the two applicants had come together, the corporation and the applicant, as Peter said earlier, they would have been able to process some paperwork to bring that together. That process never took place. So this is why they denied, and this is why you're before us.
But they were together, and the reason for the denial isn't that.
Not on paper, not on paper, and not by, via acceptance.
But the reason for the denial is not that, the reason for the denial is the pulling of the NOI and the, and the repayment, and that was subsequently made by Mr. Moore, once he discovered and once he was informed that it occurred.
And also the reason for the denial is the fact that Mr. Moore himself didn't submit a, a check that was recognized by the Water Board. I mean, that's, that's a major part of this case.
But, but the Water Board proceeded with the $10,000 check that Ladybug Farms submitted, and something happened in the mix-up, but it's clearly, the evidence shows that that check was post-dated and that they deposited it earlier, so something got, got lost.
Did he ask, did he ask, can I submit a post-dated check to them? I mean, I, I'm sending off a $10,000 check a couple of months early.
Yeah, he did, and they said, okay. So, so there was a mix-up on that.
And then, didn't he get back the, the check once it bounced? Wasn't he aware of the...
Oh, yeah, but it was, it was, I think he got notice of it, like, in December. I, I do have a document, a letter from, from the Water Board, from, I believe, December, showing, saying something about insufficient funds.
Were they, were they mailing it to the P.O. box, or to the physical address?
I believe the physical address.
Oh, Mr. Goggins, the, the Water Board responding to questions said that they sent a notice of dishonored check on July 7th, 2016. And my question is, did Mr. Moore get that?
No, he did not. I believe it's because they were sending it to the address, the physical address, rather than the P.O. box.
Okay, another question. Your client, in a conversation with Mr. Growl on April 12th of this year...
With, with Mr. Who?
April 12th of this year, your, your client had a discussion with Mr. Growl in which he said he did receive a notice of insufficiency from his bank. When did he receive that?
Yeah, so, so he, he did understand that it, he got in touch with the bank, and he, he was confused. He didn't understand why they deposited that check early.
But he knew in July that it had been dishonored?
I, that's my understanding.
Okay. On the same discussion that your client had with Mr. Growl on April 12th of this year, he said that the NOI for Ladybug Farms and the $10,000 check that Ladybug Farms submitted to the Water Board were not done with his knowledge or approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then on, on what basis can your client rely upon a submission by Ladybug Farms in a check that was not done on his behalf?
No, no, he, he wasn't aware that they pulled it.
No, no, no. What he said, what he told Mr. Growl, according to the transcript of the conversation, or record of the conversation, is that the NOI submitted September 7th and the checks submitted September 7th were not submitted with his knowledge and approval. Is that correct?
That's, that's, that's not my understanding.
Okay, well, that's what the record shows. Has, has Ladybug Farms, as a corporation, ever been formed?
My understanding that it, it has. In fact, I think evidence has been presented by Mr. Koloris showing that it, that it's active and in good standing. And was it on the, I, I believe it was at the time of the submission.
Is your client a, a stockholder in it, or a member of it?
Not now, no.
Was he ever?
Well, there was never any operating agreement that was ever presented to him. So, but at the, but he understood, he believed to be at that time. He, he, he thought he was.
He thought he was, but he actually wasn't?
Because no operating agreement was ever presented to him.
Are you familiar with the Urgency Ordinance?
Yeah.
Is there anything in there that, that you can point us to that would give this planning commission the power or authority to take a submission that comes nine or 10 months after a prescribed date and make it relate back?
Well, because the, the original, it's, it's our position and our argument, that the original deadlines were met, and were relating back because of subsequent bad actions and criminal activity by the other party. And, and that the deficiencies were remedied.
Okay, when you say the original deadlines were met, that can only be on the basis that the Ladybug Farms' check submitted September 7th counts to benefit Mr. Moore, when he apparently knew nothing about it.
No, he, he knew about it, he understood it to be part of, you know, meeting his deadline. Why would he be working with these folks otherwise? I mean, they were, they were collaborating. Why, it's, it's not as if this is some fiction where Ladybug Farms was created for, like, for this property at the same time that Mr. Moore was proceeding with an application. You wouldn't have two applications proceeding on the same property, they were together.
Mr. Goggins, I understand you're, you're, you're very clear in an assertion that without the pulling, without Ladybug Farms pulling back their application, the application, that, the, the application for registration with Calaveras County would have been granted. And I don't, I don't see that clarity, and I didn't hear it from Director Moore.
Well...
It sounded as if, if you guys can work everything out, and the Water Board would agree that this is the way the Water Board's gonna treat it, but then we would take a look at it, and that's, that's...
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, like, I'm separating out the conflict here. If there, if, if there was no conflict, there would have been no pulling of the NOI and the $10,000 payment, which is the direct cause and result of, would cause the denial. It's the reason for the denial.
One of, one of the grounds for the denial.
It's, it's the articulated reason for the denial.
The fact that, that your client did not submit a complete application with payment, valid payment, is another ground. I mean, my way of thinking, it's a, it's a major ground. And that's, that's not tied to bad things that happened in January.
Well, and, and it's our, it's our position that the $10,000 check that was paid by September 7th was part of Mr. Moore's application, which was... September 7th was part of Mr. Moore's application, which was joining together with the Ladybug Farms application.
I understand, I understand that's, that's your position.
Okay, thank you.
But, but when Ladybug Farms submitted their $10,000 check on September 7th, they did so with a separate notice of intent, didn't they, in, in Ladybug Farms' name?
Yeah, but if, if, if that NOI wasn't attached, it has to be attached to an application to begin with.
No, they couldn't.
It can't proceed on its own.
Couldn't, couldn't Ladybug Farms send it in to say, hey, here's a $10,000 check to support Mr. Moore's NOI? They could have done that, couldn't they?
Well, that's implied. That's a, that, that is implied. That is implied. Because it requires an application to get to the NOI and it's been submitted, it's been received, and, and, and nobody ever told them that it wasn't, that they were separate at that time. They were together. Why, why would somebody submit an NOI and a $10,000 payment on an application that they weren't a part of?
I guess that's what we're going to find out.
Okay, I guess so. Anything else?
Yes, well, just one more question.
Okay.
I see a lot of email documentation from a Deborah Grimes. And.
She, she is the cultural consultant on this project and I'm sure she.
I'm with the Calaveras, Banning, Milwaukee Indians, tribal cultural resource specialist. Been here forever. And I became involved through unknown.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to have you come to the mic for just a moment, please.
I'm Deborah Grimes, Calaveras, Banning, Milwaukee Indians, tribal cultural resource specialist. I've known Ray for a few years. I got involved through the process because of the cultivation and the cultural resources out there and working closely with Terry Strange. And so that's how I became in reviewing the area with Mr. Moore. I knew he had site there previously because it belonged to the nice landowner here. And we work really close with landowners. And when I was made aware that Ray was moving into that property because he's wanted to come to Calaveras, to the country for a while now. And I shared with him, when that time comes, I'll be contacted by the archeological department. And from there, then that process starts.
Okay.
And so that's how I got involved with it. And knowing Ray, I started asking about the paperwork. And then I was approached one day by Michael there. And I shared with Mr. Petkovich that he's not the applicant. I need to work directly with the landowner, who is the applicant on the property for the cultural resources because of the site. And so that's where I came into effect. And then at the time, it's been reviewing the area like every couple of weeks on the land. And then when Mr. Petkovich made me aware that, you know, I needed to kind of talk with him too, I shared with him, he's not the, I looked, looked at the information on the website. And then I asked Mr. Moore, I said, Ray, could I look at all the biological and archeological information you have obtained from Jeanette, from Trish Hernandez and as well as from Terry Strange? I've worked with Terry, you know, through many projects. And so he didn't have that information. And working real closely for many years, I've never known this gentleman. I guess I've never worked with him before with the planning department. I've worked real closely with Deborah Lewis and them in there and, you know, Public Works and stuff like that. And so I shared with Ray that it would be important for him to go down to our planning department and, and obtain his copy so he understood. And he was like really kind of confused. And so I realized that there are some kind of little things in him not understanding. So I contacted Deborah Lewis by the email and was going to inquiring about, you know, the process and stuff. And so she then submitted the email to Paul. And so Paul got back to us and with the permission from Mr. Ray to help him through understanding the process.
So you were doing consulting work for Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I wanted to get clarity on. Thank you. All right, so we're going to go to public comment now. You will have a chance for rebuttal as well. The public comment is limited to five minutes per person. Got to stay on topic with the agenda, which is going to the quality water board permit. And first up.
My name is Romina Filipponi.
I'm going to ask you for a huge favor. Could you please write your name on that sheet there in front of you? Because I know that she's not going to be able to spell that one. It's kind of like my last name, forget it.
I will.
Thank you so much.
No problem. I took, I understand about the time that you guys said that we only have five minutes. So I wrote everything that I would like to say in a short paragraph so you can understand. I'm sorry about my accent. If you don't understand, just ask me the questions. Unfortunately, my husband and I are here today to agree to the original denial of the license and request it once again due to unrecognizable differences between the parties, which will be Ray Moore and us. We are Ladybug Farm LLC and we are the founders of the business. Ray Moore was included into our project as the caretaker and our agent to represent us from time to time since we reside in Miami. For his work, we offered him a 15% of the business under certain conditions he accepted. My husband, among other responsibilities, was in charge of filling the paperwork to follow the rules and regulations. Because there were deadlines and to not lose those out and the opportunity of applying for the commercial medical license, my husband trusted Ray Moore to be the applicant. Ray Moore agreed to transfer all documents we were filling under his name to Ladybug Farm LLC once we created it. I opposed to trusting Moore that much. Our families did too. My husband will say Ray will never do what he is doing today. We invested all our money into a project of our own with only the best intentions to have a team create a steady business and to be fair to, generous to them. We never once tried to change Ray Moore's percentage, but on the contrary, we started at 15% and we increased it to a 24%. Today, Ray Moore is here because he wants 100%. Today, I'm here, standing before you to request a 0%. And most importantly, just to show Ray Moore that it's not okay to go through life stealing people's money and dreams. This project was for my family, for my one-year-old son, that was this future as well. Ray Moore is not discouraging us to helping others, but he was certainly a life lesson. He approached us with a long, sad story. And we quickly decided to, to help him and his wife. Not by only offering him a job, a chance and a percentage of our company, but also in a personal level. We also hired an advisor that helped Moore and told him what to do and gave them a 25% of the business as well. On a personal level, we gave him all he requested and more. Nothing was enough. He continues to want more. Aside from the emotional stress we suffered through long months and after giving a short explanation of why we stand here today, from a legal standpoint, there is a list of rules and regulations that we, Ladybug Farm LLC, completed successfully in a timely manner in order to acquire the medical cannabis license follow, following the planning department rules and regulations. And Ray Moore did not. I spent, I think I have a little bit more time. I timed myself. So I ended up spending $190,000 into this project. We brought a team. We spent our money. I left my son back home. I'm not here with him today. I spent a lot more money just coming here and trying to make this work. I presented to Ray Moore not one operating agreement, but two. And I was always open for him to feel comfortable, happy and to give him a chance to grow in life, just like we wanted to do with our families. Ray Moore agreed at the beginning, when he had power of the lease that we put under his name and with the application that we requested him to fill, he decided not to sign the operating agreement, not the first one, not the second one. We gave him months for him to get a different lawyer. He didn't trust Peter Calores. We said, go, look for somebody else, see that we're trying to make this business work for everyone. We're not trying to take advantage of anyone here. Please do so. Peter Calores went there, we showed, I emailed, I have tons of proof. I, I can't even imagine all the documents that I have. I documented everything.
You've got about 15 seconds.
And he denied because he wants 100%. And that's it.
Thank you.
How is everyone today? I want to thank the, the board of supervisors and the entire panel.
Can you now just give us your name, please?
Sure. My name is Michael Petkovich and I am part of Ladybug Farm together with my wife. I want you guys to make a decision, just like Patrick said, on justice, on being fair and opening your hearts and your minds to the real situation. You know, when I, when we first came over here, I wanted to help Ray. He was in a really bad position. He was sleeping on a couch with his wife. They had no money. And we brought them to this opportunity, to this county. So the fact that Deborah says that she's known him for years just baffles me. I have proof that she's lying in my phone. And I want to go on now. So he was so kind to me at first, you know, when I realized that I was helping him, he just seemed like, no matter what happened, everything was perfect. Everything we talked about, everything was great. Once I put the two most important things under his name, which was the application, by the way, that's my handwriting. I found the land, which is owned by Mr. Hoffman. I talked to his, his agent, which is Mr. Bill Schmidt. I structured a three-year lease. I put a purchase agreement to purchase the land and then did the lease because we didn't have the time to, to reach the deadline. So we had to move forward. Just weeks, if not days, after I submitted them, I started to notice a change in Ray's behavior. He wasn't thankful anymore. He was almost agitated, he just developed this agitated behavior about everything. And so, you know, that, that already gave me some kind of position of where he stands, but he confirmed it after, he mentioned to me on several occasions that he was going to keep everything under his name and that the license was not going anywhere. Told me that. That was back in July. Furthermore, he refused to sign the operating agreement, the first one that we gave him, which was the 15%. There was a big, I guess he wasn't happy with that and we tried to make him happy. So we went back to the drawing board with the partners. We put up another agreement. We all hugged, we set a prayer there and, and we thought that was it. We went, we hired Mr. Calores to draft up the operating agreement and to set up the entire, you know, a business from a legal standpoint. The seller's permit, the board of equalization registration and all of that. A month after, or about two months after, sometime in October, Peter approached, together with myself in person, approached Ray to sign the operating agreement, which he had already mentioned he had no intentions of doing. We all know why. And he denied to sign it. That's when we knew and we confirmed exactly what, what he was doing. We gave him two months to hire an attorney and to make a decision to sign the operating agreement or, you know, just so the attorney can review it for him if he wasn't able to comprehend it. So that way they can make a decision. You can only imagine the level of betrayal that I feel. I considered him a friend. From just an investing standpoint, I also put sort equity. I spent over five months last year, 2016, I spent it here in California, flying away from my family, sometimes coming with my family, without them, however. I founded the company. Excuse me. I filled out the application, I put it under Ray's name. I found the property. I purchased a brand-new 2017 trailer for them, which I currently still indebted. I wanted him to live comfortable with his wife. We had other alternatives of buying a cheaper trailer, but we didn't go for that. My wife and I funded the entire project, everything, including the water board, biological, cultural resources, the application fee. In fact, I put Deborah in contact with Ray. They didn't renew each other. I have, I have proof of that. I was in Florida. The reason I told her to go see him was because he was on the land. He was our agent. I have proof that I deposited several thousand dollars into Ray's account. I lent him $7,000 on a personal level. He still hasn't paid me back to this day. In addition to all the money that we spent, Ray kept everything on the property, never gave us access again to the property. We went with the sheriff's department. We sent him a demand letter to give us back our materials, our things. He never responded. I flew my parents out, I flew my parents-in-law out, I flew my brother, friends, everyone to help us because this was a very large, well, it's a pretty big operation. Can't do it with one or two people, three or four. So I flew everybody out to, to help with the process. You know, there's one part that I skipped you and I'd like to go back to it. I filled up 500 pots with a snowshoe over the summer by myself. Ray's back was hurting. I did it all. I filled them up with a, with a snowshoe. Our tractor broke and there was no other way to do it. So I had to stay in the summer and work. In the winter, when it got really cold.
You've got it. 30 seconds.
You've got it. I'm almost done. Thank you. I spent three months, exactly from October 10th to January 15th, here in Calaveras County. I worked in the cold barn 12 hours a day, along with my parents, brother, everyone that I brought. So I just want to let you know how involved we were. It wasn't just a, we funded it and we left. We filled out the paperwork, we did it, we did it all. I mean, let me take something back. Ray did a good job by cultivating with the assistance of a master consultant that we brought on board. I will give him that. That's the reason why we decided to go into business. Unfortunately, we are where we are today and we tried to negotiate with him over the last month. The reason we offered him the 15% because that was his original deal. And obviously, since we cannot be on the property together or anything, what we requested was that he be a silent partner for 15%. He'd be the fifth silent partner as long as he transferred everything to the, you know, according to the original agreement. And he denied that. So I wanted to give a little background of how we couldn't reach an agreement. The reason we couldn't is because he doesn't want to leave the land. And obviously, we can't trust him because he threw us off the land already. So if we go into the business again, which we would like, obviously, how would we ever, you know, let Ray, first of all, control the business, do everything and then, and then let, give us access to the property? So that, that concludes my.
Thank you.
My, my publisher. Thank you.
My name is Peter Calores. We've heard a lot of facts and alleged facts and testimony, most of which is not relevant to why we're here today. The reason we're here today is because there was a failure to follow the urgency ordinance guidelines regarding water board and the things that needed to be done prior or on September 7th, which were, which, for whatever reason, didn't happen. And that's a bright line. September 7th, everything up to September 7th is timely. Everything after September 7th is not timely. And that's what we have here. Check was written by Mr. Moore on Mr. Moore's check, checking account, which I might want to add, the address on that account is a Florida address, so any notifications perhaps were sent to the address listed on his check. So Mr. Moore issued a check to the appropriate water board authorities. The check wasn't honored by the bank, it was returned. Notice was sent to Mr. Moore to that effect. Whether Mr. Moore understood what the notice was, the legal ramifications thereof, maybe it's explained for the fact that he, he's not able to. it's explained for the fact that he's not able to read very well or whatever, but that's not relevant. The fact notice was sent, presumably received. The notice I'm referring to is a notice that the check was dishonored and the fact that the paperwork for the water board was incomplete. And I think that pretty much ends the analysis. The water board requirements were not met, for whatever reason, just to file them or not. So I'm here to support the department's request to denial the application on the basis that the water board requirements, which is a very important requirement, was not met by the applicant, Mr. Moore. I can go into great detail about the relationship between the parties on or before June 30th, leading up to September 7th and thereafter. If you want me to, I would be happy to. I'm not sure any of that is relevant to why we're here, so I say no over here, and I would only do that upon a request. So the point of the matter is, we're here today for one reason only. If the water board requirement was not met, it's jurisdictional failure to not file that in a timely manner is fatal to the application, and I encourage this board to grant the denial and not issue the license to Mr. Moore. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
What was the reason a separate NOI was submitted on September 7th under the name of Ladybug Farm?
The part, up until September 7th and sometime shortly thereafter, the parties were operating on the basis that they were going to do this together, this being cultivate on that piece of property. The requirement for the September 7th, one of the requirements on September 7th other than the water board was to create an entity. The entity was Ladybug Farm. That is what the parties intended to do when Mr. Moore filed the application in his name. The application or the entity hadn't been yet formed. Mr. Moore was here. It was submitted in his name, and that's why that part was filed in Mr. Moore's name. And the reason that was filed, the NOI was filed under Ladybug Farm was because we had created an entity prior to that in the name of Ladybug Farm. We didn't wait until September 7th to create the entity, to obtain the seller's permit or register for the franchise tax board. That was, that happened sometime in August. And subsequent to that, Mr. Petkovich filed the paperwork for the NOI.
Were you or your clients aware by September 7th that Mr. Moore's check had bounced?
I was not. I was not. And I had met with Mr. Moore on the property one time for a rather lengthy time to discuss the operating agreement that I was under the impression that they were all moving together towards forming and to memorialize by way of the written operating agreement. And in addition to that, a document was prepared by me, an assumption of, or the transfer, assignment of the lease to Mr. Petkovich, DBA Ladybug Farm, which obviously would have been subject to the approval of Mr. Hoffman because it's, there's a provision in the lease for sub-licensing or subletting or transfer the license pending approval by the landowner. Both of those documents or concepts were rejected by Mr. Moore. Subsequent to that, I believe, Mr. Petkovich submitted the operating agreement another time, upping the ante from fifteen percent to twenty-four percent. And again, that was met with rejection.
Were you aware that, and your clients aware, that Mr. Moore had already submitted a notice of intent?
I was not.
So, so far as you know, when Ladybug Farm submitted its notice of intent and its check, he was doing it for Ladybug Farms?
Yes. I actually, let me, I knew that Michael was going to take care of the water board part of the September 7th requirement. I wasn't involved with that. I was involved with the three other things, the forming of the entity, the seller's permit, and registration with the franchise tax board. I assumed that Michael was going, and I understood that Michael was going to handle directly the requirement with the water board.
So at that point, it was just a matter, as far as you know, your client, did your client know that Mr. Moore had submitted an application to the water board?
I believe, I believe he did know, yes. But I was not aware of that fact.
And it's my understanding that Mr. Petkovich actually filled out this form.
Which form is that?
This is the application in the name of Ray Moore.
My understanding is that he did exactly that. That's his handwriting.
So this was not, this?
But the legal significance of that document isn't changed by the fact that it's in my client's handwriting. It was signed and submitted by Mr. Moore, so that is Mr. Moore's application for the permit to cultivate. And the understanding was that that would then be transferred to Ladybug Farm, but they never came together. In fact, they just grew farther and farther apart as time went on. So, so, you know, where we are right now is that application for cultivating on that particular APM was in the name of Mr. Moore. Nothing can change that. The application or the NOI was signed and submitted by Mr. Moore, check written by Mr. Moore in his account, which was not honored by the bank, so it was rejected, never timely filed. Nothing anybody here can say can change those facts. And unfortunately, that renders this, the application fatal, in my opinion. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment?
In behalf of, I'm hearing, we're getting right to the water board part. I had the opportunity also to talk with Ashley with the water board because we do work closely with the water board, not Ray, but the tribe. And I was trying to understand all this process with all this cultivation going on, these tier twos. I don't know what all this stuff is, okay? I'm not a cultivator, first of all. But it was my interest of knowing what effects are going to be done with the water and the cultural resources and living here and being here on our land of Calaveras. So talking with Ashley and trying to understand this process, consulting with Ray Moore, that I didn't know with him and Michael or anything, that was, you know, they're friends and so forth, and, but Michael was helping him fill out this paperwork. So my understanding is when he did the application, you know, that's where we were getting kind of confused, that you had Ray Moore when you first started out, and then you had a timely manner to put stuff into the water board, you know, get your surveys done and things in this manner. And consulting with Ashley when she was at the water board, she made me aware that, you know, that it's under Ray Moore, but Ladybug. And so I was kind of confused there too myself. So my understanding from Ray was that, you know, he, they'd done the application, and Mr. Petkovich was helping him do that because of his disability area. So I started reviewing these areas, and I shared with Mr. Moore that my high concern is that, you know, the land's being taken care of appropriately. Are you going to be living here? You know, I knew he wanted to live here, him and his wife, and build up in the community. I shared with him that, you know, we're closely with our county. That's what we do. We're here together. And if you're not understanding anything, because he made me aware that, you know, they wanted him to sign these documents, and our tribe having, you know, a nonprofit organization, I shared with him, you've got to be careful with that. I'm not an attorney, but you need to be careful, and we need to have right things in our community here. We don't need to have wrong things. And that's just how I feel being 53 years almost in our community, living here rest of my life. But on behalf of that, that was my understanding too, that, you know, Michael was helping him through that process and talking with Ashley. And with the check being to that point of it, it did get cashed, and it wasn't to be cashed until the September 7th post-date. So Ashley was, at that time, did make us aware through, you know, consultation on the phone with Mr. Moore and the tribe that, that so much is going on, so they were just doing the process, putting checks in, you know, so many people are going so many different ways with the biologists and the water board at this time. So, and again, I would like to share that on behalf of the cultural resources and then our land here in Calaveras County. I've seen so many different cultivations out there where the land is just not looking good today. But I would like to share that the upkeeping on the land, and I was there reviewing the land every other week. Sometimes it'd come to two and a half weeks before we were going to look at what kind of archaeological testing, if we needed to do any. Our preference is preservation, is to leave it alone. We have grinding rock, nice creek that runs into it, and a midden deposit, which we were able to kind of avoid out of that area. And so on behalf of that, I would like to share that I was through that area, and I know things, you know, that's between a lot of people, but the caretaking and the respect and the wanting to be here, whether he cultivates or not, to let you know, he's still going to be here in Calaveras with us. But he's done a good job out there, him and his wife, and they've communicated really well with our tribe and the archaeologists and the biologists. And I share again that, like I've shared with Mr. Petkovich, that we don't be contacted, even if we know you. I work with private landowners right now, eighty-plus something of them in Mountain Ranch.
You've got about fifteen seconds.
We, we're there to work with the landowners in a good way, when they're the landowners or the lease of the property. And I can't be working with people that don't have the signature of the lease of the property. If he did, I would work directly with Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay. Saying none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Just that public comment. I'm sorry. I was going to go back to him and see if he had any rebuttal, and then you. We're not closing the public hearing, we're closing public comment. Made your heart jump, huh?
Ethan, first, do you have anything to say?
Not really. No, nothing else. Can you say anything, Mike?
Just one general comment that Mr. Godwin opened in the statement. He mentioned that this is not a normal reason for a denial. Unfortunately, it's all too normal. We've denied many people for not making the requirements for September 7th with the water board, the seller's permit, business license application, it happens all the time. The circumstances between the parties are really unfortunate for recent apps also, many, way too many times. And I think the equitable thing to do, what Mr. Godwin suggested, is to actually deny this appeal and support the finding direct decision.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to clarify that what I meant was that it's not the technical reasons aren't unique, it's the sabotage, it's the killing of a permit, and I keep going back to this, but for that, and I understand that there may be some other issues, but the staff would have worked with the parties. That's what was happening, and we made every effort, made every good faith effort to work it out, to negotiate, and the other party, the other side just did not want to negotiate. But just a couple of points. I think the testimony by the other interested parties, in fact, provides us with evidence to show that Ray Moore's application, Mr. Petkovich even testified that he actually filled out the application, that they were together, that the application was, that Ladybug Farms was an extension of Ray Moore for the purposes of that application. And it was the subsequent bad acts after those deadlines that resulted in the sabotage, but then immediately thereafter, remedies were put in place to take care of those deficiencies. And so again, I'm just requesting an open mind and an open heart and looking at a little bit of compassion, a little bit of equity towards a victim. And one final point is that it's my understanding that all money's invested by the Petkoviches have been, have gone back to them, in fact, and beyond that. So I just look to you guys to consider your conscience and grant the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now I will close the public hearing unless any commissioners have further questions. Nope? Okay. Then we'll bring it back. Do you have any comments?
Well, this is an unfortunate one. I don't see any way under the urgency ordinance that this commission has the ability to take the most recent check that was submitted nine months late and relate it back to September 7th. And I'm not seeing any way that this commission can utilize the Ladybug check as a substitute for Moore's check. It was apparently not done for him, but for Ladybug. Two separate NOIs, two separate names, and it got returned at the request of the maker, Ladybug Farms. So I'm not seeing any way under the urgency ordinance to grant this appeal on the basis of the check alone.
I think it's unfortunate. We've seen a bunch of unfortunate cases where people have worked together and somebody's always got the short end of this. But in reality, it wasn't there on September 7th, so.
I agree. It sounds more like a civil case between these parties than something for this body. And I don't, even if, even if there had been some sort of an agreement between them, I'm still not convinced that that would allow the Ray Moore application to then correct with the $10,000 check bouncing and all that. Unfortunate is the one way to word it. We're personally going to have to uphold the denial.
Well, I am with the rest of the commission so far on this, and I think it's extremely sad that this sort of situation arises, but I think we need to make it entirely clear that if this decision, which it appears is going to be, is to deny the appeal, it is not on the basis of who are the bad guys and who are the good guys and this sort of thing. We're applying the statute, the ordinance, and we see no way that the ordinance would permit any other result.
I'm going to also uphold based upon the application being in Ray Moore's name. What happens here between the two parties is their thing, but I will tell you that reading all those text messages weighed heavily on me. You could see where the flow was coming from, the discussions, the timelines, the dates that things happened, and I think that unfortunately for everybody here, this is one grow that's going to end up being denied, and there's some issues between everybody getting up and telling the truth here. So we need to keep, ruling on what we have ruled on in the past, and that is that this seller's permit was not properly, or water board permit, excuse me, was not properly done by September 7th. So can we go to reading the resolution, please?
I do have, I do have an issue on the resolution. Under the evidence, under paragraph one, it says a notice of intent was filed by Ray Moore. Under the evidence, under paragraph one, it says a notice of intent was filed by Ray Moore on June 28th, 2016, which did not contain the required site management plan. And I think I learned today it wasn't required.
Yes, that's correct.
So everything after, including the word "which" in that sentence should come out.
Very good. We can certainly amend that. Yes, sir. So staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution 2017-022, as amended, denying appeal 2016-561, and thereby upholding the planning director's determination to reject application 2016-561.
As amended.
As amended.
One other possible amendment is that the site management plan is again mentioned down with, regarding to the, the Ladybug Farms submission. Seems to me to avoid the implication that that's an essential thing. We ought to eliminate the application that's without a site management plan.
I agree.
Very good.
Okay. Can we get a motion as amended?
Second.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Peter, do you want to read the appeal process?
Uh, this act, okay. This action by the planning commission is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors in 15 calendar days.
Do you need a break or do you want to just go through this and get over? Yeah? It was that hour and a half thing. No, we have a couple of things for this. It's super simple.
Study session for the comment period.
Okay, let's do it. You don't need to be sorry. Are you saying you don't get paid?
I got one or two.
Okay. So there is a study session today, right?
Nope.
We're going to go to public comment period for anything not on the agenda. Nothing? Okay. We will go to, if any of the commissioners have any reports they'd like to report out on?
Not me.
Okay. Planning Director?
Just a couple of items. One, the agenda has two public comment periods. I don't know why. We are going to be changing that and there'll be one public comment period in the future unless for some reason you think there's a need to have two public comment periods. I think the, it probably is maybe a holdover from in the past. If we had a lot of public comment and often at the board, there's a lot of public comment. They have half hour identified for that. And if there's more people that want to speak, they go to the end of the agenda and can speak later on. And I think that somehow just sort of carried over here. I'm not sure why. There doesn't appear to be any legal reason why we have two public comment periods. There's rarely, if ever, someone who comments at the end of the meeting. So we're just going to make that change with the next agenda. So we'll be seeing that changed. It'll be at the start like we have it already because we won't have two of them. Unless for some reason we discover, oh, we're required to have two. But I haven't found any reason why that's the case. The only other thing I wanted to report on was we had a public comment meeting on Monday for the EIR, draft EIR for the cannabis ordinance. We had about 40 people in attendance. Interesting meeting, trying to keep people focused on commenting on the draft EIR and not on the ordinance and the bigger policy issue itself. The comment period ends on June 14th. So we're still sort of waiting. We've had a few comments come trickling in, but we expect most of the comments to come at the end. There have been some requests to extend the comment period. That will be something that we'll sort of look at as we get a little closer to the end of it. And the board may weigh in on that issue. So other than that, I have no other things to report to you.
Do you have any estimation as to when that might be coming before us?
Well, if all things go as planned, the comment period ends on the 14th. We then need to review all those comments, respond to them, and prepare the final EIR. Depending on what the comments are, they may necessitate additional research and analysis. So minimum amount of time is probably about a month. It could take much longer, again, depending on the scope and scale of the comments. So I would say probably we're looking at late June, late July at the earliest or potentially August. Or if the board extends the comment period, then it would be later than that. And we're also in the process of preparing the EIR and the general plan. I'm beginning to receive the initial drafts of some of the chapters of that. I'm hoping that that will be, we'd be close to being done by the end of June.
And then that'll start a 45-day comment period.
Then there will be a 45-day comment period on that as well. And we may just go with a 60-day comment because that's going to be a much more lengthy document as it is.
I like it.
I'm in with that.
So, okay. So you think it would be July, August before we start?
Realistically, July, August, yeah.
Will there be any other public hearings on it before then? Or was that the only one?
Well, there is the public study, the study session of the board next Tuesday evening, the 30th. It's sort of still working on, I know the CAO is working on the development of the agenda for that. I won't be here, nor will Megan. So we're going to be delegating that to our underlings.
Actually, it'll be David Sirius sitting with the board. Anthony and I will be there in case there's any specific comments that he's unable to answer.
Great.
But actually, the board's intent now was to hear more from the public on, you know, what their feelings are on a number of issues.
Yeah. Okay. So are we all done?
I'm all done.
Anybody else have anything to say? Want to wrap her up and go home? All right. We're adjourned.